Good evening, I call the May 18th Board of Education meeting into order or into session and asking please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, and this is a republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberation and justice for all.
All right, and next thing I'm going to do is face school student reports, I'm going to turn it over to our guests.
Good evening, everyone. To start with, the updates, two weeks ago, EJ O filled the halls with spirit by hosting the school's last year week of the year before the seniors left their wives. EJ O played music on the last few days in the morning as the students came into the building and cheered for the seniors as they walked in to get everybody pumped for the day. This was an exciting week for everybody, and then the last day the seniors were encouraged to wear their new college apparel who were there will be attending in the fall. EJ O also hosted their third blood drive of the year last week. With the turnout of almost eighty people, the blood drive was a large success. Since the cafeteria has been closed, EJ O and FBI like have been doing a joint fundraiser and have been selling snacks around all lunch periods to students. Finally, after a lot of campaigning, new students have been elected to be officers of EJ O for the upcoming year. The Student Athletic Council also held their elections for next year. The students who applied for a position met with our athletic director, and once they were approved, the ballot was sent out to all of the high school students to choose the officers for next year. The Athletic Council podcast, The Eagle's Landing continues, and senior athletes have been interviewing to share their experience over the years and being part of the Eastchester Athletic Program. Also, spring sports are in full swing. Baseball, softball, golf, tennis, track, and lacrosse practice have practices or games every single day. These sports will continue until early to mid-June. The previous officers of the Hapsetup Pre-Humanity Club formed a Really For Life Leadership Committee and had the event this past Saturday. There was a large screen at Lakeout projecting the ceremony, and people were able to come to watch from their cars. The ceremony was also streamed virtually on Facebook. Along with this ceremony, there were many live performances from students from Eastchester making this event a lot of fun. We were able to raise over seventy-six thousand dollars that will be going to cancer research through the American Cancer Society.
The Honor Society have been on their way with inductions. The Science Honor Society has their induction May twentieth virtually. The Rogue Campus Social Studies Honor Society had a new member induction on May sixth and had elected new officers for next year. Many foreign language students sent applications in for the French, Italian, and Spanish Honor Societies, and the new juniors and seniors that got in will be announced next week. Also, National Honor Society applications have been sent to all juniors who qualify for it. Going Green recently participated in a river cleanup at the Bronx River. Students worked with the Westchester Parks Foundation and went into the river with water suits on to pick up the garbage. Students who participated were able to fill five full trash bags consisting of more than fifty plastic bottles, a lot of styrofoam, and other miscellaneous litter. This educational and fun trip was planned in hopes of encouraging students to do their part to keep our community clean. Players Club is continuing to prepare for their spring musical. Eastchester is one of the first high schools to bring back live musicals in the county. Still having to remain socially distant, they're only selling hundred tickets to students and parents per night. Their musical is called Twenty-Fifth Annual Plutum County Spelling Bee, and many students are looking forward to this exciting event. Get your tickets before they're sold out. In the beginning of this month, the seniors went to their wives internships to get to experience working in the real world before they go off to college. And as we get closer to the end of the school year, the senior class is looking forward to prom and graduation as a celebration for their high school career.
And since this is my last board meeting, I just wanted to thank everybody here for an amazing two years of working together. Next year, I'll be attending Cornell University and studying applied economics and management at the Dyson School of Business. And even though I'm really excited to say goodbye, I promise you in great hands of Maria. Thank you all so much again, and have a great night.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Please come back and make sure you tell us how you were prepared. Hopefully you are. Hopefully you're well prepared. I have no doubt that you are, but you know, thank you very much. Congratulations. That's been a great two years ahead of you.
Thank you.
Miss you, Brian.
Miss you, guys.
Congratulations as well.
Thank you.
All right, Board Committee reports. You know, you want to do, or Dave, you want to do facilities?
Yeah, facilities met tonight. We did a discussion of just about the overall needs of all five of the buildings and maybe, you know, planning to finance a way to fix what we need to fix over the next few years.
Any other committee reports? All right, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just the balance of my report tonight will be around our district emergency safety and security plan. And before I get into that, I just want to mention a couple of quick things. We're finishing this year on a strong and positive note. Our surveillance testing has so far turned up not a single positive case. We're excited about that. It's been a very safe and very effective program for helping monitor the health and safety of our students and staff. And we're also planning for some great end of the year festivities that'll be forthcoming, but as the guidelines are changing, like I understand that even tomorrow, we'll get some new guidelines or new announcements from the state in terms of what is allowed for indoor gathering and outdoor gathering. All of that is that evolves. We're staying on top of it, trying to plan the most open and celebratory events that we possibly can for this end of the school year. And as our students talk about, you know, graduation and so forth, but at each school, the moving up ceremonies and so forth, we're trying to really make them special. So as many celebrations as we can possibly have. And we're looking also, you know, at next year and what next year will look like. We're beginning that planning process. And so we're really excited and engaged in all of that work. And with that said, one of the things that is part of our planning process, both for this year and into next year, really involves the safety and security work that we have done here in the district and that this board has committed to over the past year. And here to talk about what's been accomplished to date is John LaPlaca from Altairis Consulting and Jeff Hunter, our security coordinator, who works in our district half-time through Altairis. And these two fine gentlemen are going to come before you and give you some information about the great work they've been doing throughout this school year. So please feel free to get started with everybody. Thank you. Dr. Glass, thank you. Good evening to the board, viewers at home. Thank you for the invitation for us to come out tonight to talk about safety and security. It's certainly been an unusual thirteen months or so, whereas safety and security was always a top priority in all the districts that we're currently working with. And it certainly floated down in the power limit because there were so many other things that districts were worried about, had to prioritize as far as getting kids back to school and continuity of learning going forward. So as a firm, we also had to pivot with the times. We worked very closely with Dr. Glass and his colleagues at the district level, as well as districts all across the lower Hudson Valley, Long Island, upstate New York, working on reentry planning, which consumed a tremendous amount of time. And it was a team effort across district to district. Our firm getting involved, we had virtual meetings of hundreds of people on the calls, working together to figure out how can we safely bring kids back to school. So it was a busy summer, which culminated in an announcement, shortly after Labor Day, Governor Cuomo announced that all schools would have to have a public health safety plan at the school level, which had to be inside of their district plans. So that was another project that we worked on, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But what I wanted to do tonight, along with Jeff, was to go over a summary of the work that's been done. And I must say that I commend the board, the district administration in Eastchester for being proactive on the topic of safety and security. I wish I could say that every district out there is investing and has this as a top priority. Unfortunately, that's not always the case, even though they want it to be the case. We have tremendous districts that we work with, you are one of them, and it's sometimes very, very difficult to take a critical look in the mirror, to identify the gaps and loopholes which you might have, and be eager and willing to change them. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we move along. So one of the first things, as Dr. Glass alluded to, that we worked on is the district safety plan. So your district's safety plan is your document, it's your public-facing document. It has to be on your website, it's required every year. The district's safety team has to review, revise, and approve that. It's a board-approved document, it's a three-day comment period, and it has to be up on the website. In addition to that, as I mentioned, this year, we had to add that protocol under the twenty-eight oh one education law, which is the public health emergency added to that plan. And that had to be done by April. So we had to have that approved, and now we have to have a plan to begin for the September first deadline. In addition to that, there was quite a bit of reentry work that was done, specifically with visitor protocols and a host of other things that became part of your reentry plan that was required for all school districts across the state. At the building level, each of the buildings has their own building-level emergency response plan, which is also required. And this is the confidential document that is not open to public inspection. This is reviewed, revised, and updated by the building-level emergency response teams. Our team meets with those teams on a regular basis. Throughout the COVID pandemic, we actually have made ourselves available on a monthly basis to meet with the teams virtually, which has worked out very, very well, to worry about things like emergency plans, improvement opportunities, drill modifications for COVID. That has obviously consumed much of the discussions at the building levels, is to determine those things. Once that plan is done, because we have a typo on the slide, there is a, the beds portal is the business education portal that all plans have to be uploaded to. I wish I could say it's a friendly system, it is not. Dr. Glass could probably back me up on that. It's not a user-friendly system. It's a lot of labor-intensive work to get those plans up to the state, so we assisted with that process. The plans have to be distributed by regulation to the emergency response partners, so your local law enforcement, county, and state police get them through the beds portal system. Right now, we're, it's hard to believe, but we're in the process of working on the next year's plans, and we have to leave that lead time in order to get those plans worked out, updated with the teams, and to make all the modifications on there. And there are quite a few modifications that are being made this year. Some of them are regulatory, some of them are best practices. But each year, we critically look at the plans and make modifications going forward. The teams meet on that, they require two meeting minutes, they update the plans, and then they find their way to board, who can approve the plans, and then they get set up to state again. Those are, those contain the granular level of information about how buildings and the district respond to emergencies. The reason why, which was probably obvious, the reason why they're not approved for public inspection is that we don't want to create a situation where someone might be a technically armed district has that critical granular level of information that they could utilize to actually harm the district. So whether it's floor plan, how to handle lockdowns, how to handle evacuations, sites that you go to, those types of things, we're very, very careful about disseminating, and by law, they have to be kept confidential. As far as security personnel go, one of the things that we focused on over the last twelve months was their security workforce. Specifically, if you've never heard the term before, Shell is actually a term for the emergency response protocol, shelter in place, hold in place, evacuation, lockout, and lockdown. Now, remember that, should we end the presentation, we passed everyone, does it remember that? So the Shell protocols, these are the core protocols that are utilized either singularly or in combination to manage most incidents that occur in schools. So in one way, shape, or form, we're using one of these protocols or a combination of them to manage incidents. So we work with the security workforce to make sure that they understand uniquely how schools are supposed to respond to emergencies because security personnel can work in a host of environments. They can work in corporate settings, they can work in industrial settings, school unit. We want to make sure that they understand the unique environment of those schools. Operating procedures. We standardize the operating procedures across all of the schools in the district because no matter what building they're in, we want the security workforce to be able to manage the incident, manage the data operations, visitor management across those buildings. We want to make sure that is all uniform throughout the district. And also, Jeff has served as liaison with Rider Security, which has been really a very valuable tool. Part of the process is that when you have an outside security firm, it gives you a degree of flexibility as far as making sure that you have the right people in the right roles, round pegs and round holes, we're all about. When there are problems, when there are gaps, when there are shortfalls, Jeff steps in to make sure that the, whatever gap needs to be corrected is handled with Rider, and they've been very, very responsive. I think that's been a good relationship going forward. And maybe the district made a change recently, so so far, some of it's worked out very, very well. And they're in fact with a lot of the other districts that we work with as well. Continuing on the security personnel, one of the things that we wanted to do, that we talked about with the district administration at the outset, is that we wanted to make sure there was a robust security personnel orientation process when security people come into your district, knowing the district, knowing how the buildings work, knowing how visitor management works, knowing how to manage emergencies. So we wanted to make sure that that was a solid, robust program. One of the things that we implemented was a security personnel orientation checklist that we utilize. Similar, and I love to use this as an example, when even the most veteran pilots, when they're flying JetBlue or Delta Airlines, who have thirty years on the job, they're using checklists each and every time they get aboard that plane to make sure that no step is missed. That's the same uniformity we want in your schools with your security personnel. So we developed that, customized it for the district to make sure that all the training issues were met, all the procedural issues were met, and now we have a situation, now we have that uniformated training and staff that are confident on how to manage things in your buildings. Jeff also works very, very closely with the district SRO from Eastchester PD, which has been a great relationship, a lot of collaboration on a lot of different things. This year, obviously, we created some unique challenges. We hope that as we move towards next year, there'll be additional opportunities to liaise with them and collaborate with them on other projects. If anybody, by the way, if anybody has any questions along the way, I leave these slides, feel free to stop me and I'll be happy to answer the questions. Continuing with training, all employees within the district are required to have emergency response training as well as mental health training by September fifteenth of each year or within thirty days of hire. So if you have somebody that comes on board mid-year, they have to be trained within thirty days. So part of that process is that we utilize an online learning management system that we created a module for, so that all staff can get that. Again, based on the Shell protocols, also prevention and threat identification. But again, one of the things that came out of situations like Sandy Hook, for example, was that some of the gaps were that some people did not know what to do when the time comes. And we don't ever want that to be a gap in your district. So that's why it's critically important that within your district, that everyone, whether they're working in the cafeteria, custodial staff, teacher, or even an administrator, they understand how to recognize threats and respond appropriately when necessary. Critically important. No matter what building you go to, if you're in a high school or an elementary school, it's done the same way. There's some nuances, but it's done the same way. So we're constantly doing training with that. We've worked this year with the district office on response training and also lockdowns, and drilled that in the district office because we find them to be just as valuable as the buildings, the other buildings across the district. So we wanted to make sure that they were safe and protected as well. Working, as I mentioned, closely with the district emergency response teams. So we avail ourselves on a monthly basis to meet with them, to conduct planning meetings, tabletop exercises. One of the things that we're really, really big on is that, this is one of those things that, emergency response is that it's not a problem until it's a problem. And if it's not something that you keep top of mind and you develop muscle memory, your plan is a fail at that point. So it can become redundant sometimes. The teams usually love it because they want to talk about and say, well, what if, what if this happened here? And actually work through that in a controlled environment, so that when they're under stress in a real situation, they know how to respond effectively. So we're constantly developing that muscle memory and maintaining that high-level preparedness in response. The other piece that we've actually done is district-wide, we've installed emergency protocol flip charts, which again goes back to this, when you're under pressure, under stress, these protocol flip charts are quick reference guides so that if they do happen, if they aren't sure, oh my God, we have an evacuation, what do I do? We have a lockout, what do I do? These are available to them in all the instructional spaces, office environments, any place where there's staff. These protocol flip charts are available, and they're a tremendous resource for staff to staff. One of the biggest hurdles districts have is with all of the emergency management items that float around, whether it's plans, drill schedules, meeting minutes, policy and procedure memos that may come down from the district office, is where you house and keep all of these things. So a while ago, we developed a private client internet site for each district that we work with. This is the central repository for everything emergency planning in the Eastchester School District. So all the administrators, district, building level, have access to this internet site, which houses all their emergency plans, floor plans, parent reunification plans, drill schedules, meeting minutes, policy memos, as well as all of our generic Altairis resources. So if they want a form, guide, or template, it's all available to them. They are all cloud-based documents, which means that the second that we update them, they're updated across our platform on all of our districts out there. So this has been really, really well received by all the schools because it is a central repository to keep things very, very organized. It's also a great response tool that if in fact there was an incident with any web-enabled device, you could pop it open, go onto the internet site, and get everything that you need to effectively manage that incident or collaborate with your emergency responders. So it's been a great tool. As far as drills, though, as you might imagine, there were numerous modifications that had to be made as a result of COVID. When in the hybrid models, we couldn't do lockdowns, drills the way we used to do them, we were pummeled in the corner. Evacuations were difficult to do. So based on state guidelines, we've worked with each of the buildings to make sure that drills were modified in such a way that kids and staff are safe, but at the same time, we were developing and we were accomplishing those drills that we are required to do to develop that muscle memory going forward. Jeff and our team are also very involved in evaluation of drills in each building. What we're looking at there is to identify, if you're not making mistakes every time you drill, then you're not drilling effectively. That's really what we want to do. We want to make sure that each and every time, we're identifying improvement opportunities, and that's what we'll do. We'll evaluate the drills. It could be something as simple as walking by a room in a lockdown, looking through the window, and seeing a set of roofie. You know, that we don't want to see. We want to make sure that those rooms look as if they are unoccupied. It might be kids talking. It could be problems with choke points in the building where there's evacuation, all types of things there. So we're always evaluating drills and utilizing a systemic forum, systemized forum, that is uniform throughout the district so that we can identify those things and where we identified those commonalities between the buildings, and why do we keep having a problem with this? Then we know that we have to take some mitigation steps to make sure we improve it. So we're always improving how we're doing those things. We employ the best practices as we go along, and again, we identify those improvement opportunities. So other things that we worked on is was a door harder policy. This, within your plans, you know, specifically the lockdown protocols, is a piece that you cannot cover windows of classrooms and you can't barricade doors. It's against regulations. There's a life safety clause that says you can't do these things. The state recognized that that's a problem because in a lockdown situation, there may not be a safe zone in the room. Safe zone in the room is that area where you can't see people. And certain rooms that have a lot of glass, like the room right behind us here, there may not be a safe zone in that room. So in certain situations, you may have to cover the glass, and/or you may want to be in a situation where you barricade the door. Well, you as a district can put into a plan something that violates a state regulation. So the state said, fine, we'll allow you to do this, but your board has to pass a policy that says you may, under exigent circumstances, cover the window, barricade the door. So that was a formal policy. There was a whole procedure that we had to go through with the state outline, and we got that into your plans and this part going forward. We did some work with equipment, so the district now has, we're working on building level, I think it's all completed across the district.
We have a hundred and forty classroom kits, classroom kits on order at this time. We've worked on the reunification kit, and it's ninety-five percent complete.
So classroom and building-level build kits are utilized when you have to evacuate the building, give you the necessary supplies and material to be able to manage students outside the building, a number of different items in there, and kind of reunification kits are those kits that would be mobilized and utilized if you had a critical incident where you had to reunify students directly with each and every parent. So that's the worst of the worst situations. You're talking about, you know, God forbid, an active shooter situation or some type of situation where it would not be appropriate to put them back on a bus to send them home. So we have to reunify one-on-one. And that's a whole process that you have very detailed plans in the district for, you're trained with the teams, and we have a number of pieces of material in that, down to the signage, literally signs that show you where to park, where you get educated, forms of thought, all those things. We've really tied it down very granularly. Some other items as far as improvement opportunities, we've did a lot of work with signage. Do you want to talk about the other signage?
Good evening. Some of the signage, we go around the district and we evaluate what we need at each school. Some of the schools, due to incidents possibly on that property, needed trespassing signs, a couple more trespassing signs. The strobe lights for our lockdown, our strobe lights for our lockdown system in district didn't have any signage. We have the signage now, it's currently being erected, so that our community knows, you know, what to do if they approach and those lights are flashing. The private property, student pickups, things like that that make property safer to enter and safer for the children that are in the school.
And signage is one of the items that we assess districts, we identify where the gaps are. If I come to a building, it should be very, very clear which rules are, where I should go, where there'd be offices, what the expectation is of me, and when conduct is not appropriate. Particularly, when you're getting law enforcement involved, one of the first things they're going to say is that, let's say you do want to prosecute someone for trespassing. There are certain requirements to say that you have to post it, and you have to communicate that to make sure. It could be something out of search, search of vehicles, that there's something to search on school property. So all these things, again, not a problem until it's a problem, so that's why we have a very uniform and robust signage plan across the district. One of the things that we always get asked is, and Superintendent knows full well the value of it, is how do you manage hundreds, literally hundreds, when you, times by the number of buildings you have, of improvement opportunities? We're not about as a firm of creating punch lists of things to say, Dr. Glass, you and your team, EJ O, take care of it. We're about working with the administrators, collaborating with them, with our boots on the ground here, with Jeff, our consulting team, to actually look at everything, have a project management system, and as we like to call it, turn the board green. So you can see on here, the college representing each of the schools, we have, for security purposes, we've kind of given the improvement opportunity, but we're looking gradually at each school, what status each improvement opportunity is at. We put detailed progress on each of them. Jeff meets with Dr. Glass, sometimes with our consulting team as well, to review, okay, what's the next five items that we want to tackle in the district? Where's the low-hanging fruit? Where are we going to get the most value? And many of these things, we don't have price tag associated with that. There are procedural issues, and some of those will actually get the best return and investment. So it's not all about spending money, it's about being wise with your investments of time and effort to get things done, to improve things going forward. So we utilize this, again, cloud-based document, that is our bible, we go through it, and we're constantly working on that as we add things on. Items on here, we'll add it to the list, but this is a great project management tool. Some of the projects that are in progress right now, key management is a big piece in every district, is identifying who has what keys, what keys are out there any given time. There are hundreds, about thousands of keys floating around. Districts are making it, they're valuing attempts to get away from keys as possible, but the price tag associated with that gives you a lot of flexibility, but again, everything has to be in a formal, long-range plan. But keys are always a vulnerability for districts. So looking at how do we track them, who has them, how do we get them back, that's a big piece. Emergency zones, briefly, is about how we break buildings up into zones so that we can utilize them for, you can release from lockdown. We can divide the cockers so we can release people from lockdown quickly. If we have to evacuate a building, we can evacuate sections of buildings, or we can evacuate in a systematic manner. Reunification sites, those areas that if a building had to evacuate for reunification, where are they going to? Again, detailed plans exist right now, but we also have, we have redundancy plans that if one location is not available, we can go to another location out there. And some of those are non-district-owned sites, which require memorandums of understanding, reciprocal agreements. Sometimes it's with other school districts, we have to worry about transportation and the like, so there's a lot to that. Interior, exterior, door numbering. Door numbering is as simple as it sounds, is one of those items where it's a low-price tag. Not a low-price tag, but a lower price tag, but tremendous resource in an actual emergency. Whether it's alerting police as to what door to come to, or what door is safe to come to, or where you are in the building, it's so important. So many buildings have issues with So many buildings have issues with door and window numbering, to identify, listen, how many critical incident, I need help, where are you? I don't know. And how do we know when we're outside the building as to where we are? We have big buildings. We have beautiful big buildings, but we have to make sure that we label them, so that in an emergency, we're effective in our approach, and I think we're about 70%.
Well, we're way up there. We're 90-plus percent, and they were in good shape prior, even prior to us coming in. We worked with you even when I was in law enforcement, the local law enforcement, and fire department had worked with you also in regards to the door and window numbering. So, we're in good shape in the district.
And the last two items, and again, these are items that were on our radar for this year. Things changed, so we had to push them toward the back burner. Threat assessment training, what this is, is this is nationally-recognized, evidence-based threat assessment team that would be mobilizing each building, so that if there was some type of threat that was identified, it's a systematic approach, and again, it's a nationally-recognized evidence-based, which means that it's been proven to work, to identify the threat and have a way of actually managing it. You don't ever want to be in a situation where someone says, so-and-so was a threat, what did you do? Well, you know, the principal did their thing, and the guidance council did their thing. That's not a nationally-recognized, evidence-based approach. That's, you know, doing what you think is the right thing, which may not be. So, we want to make sure that we have the training, we have the volume from the district, just to make sure that that's the way that we want to go. And this will be something that we're going to be targeting for as we come up to the next school year, as well as completing some of the enhancements that the buildings or the lockdown panic system, which means that you implement the system, automation takes over to a certain degree, alerts people that there's a lockdown, sends out messaging, strobes, as Jeff talked about, on the outside of the building, because as we sit here, if we see a threat outside our window, it's a big building, how do we let people on the outside of the building know we need to lock down, and there's things that you have to do? So, we don't do that. And then, finally, which is not a slide, is really about communications. I really want to commend Dr. Glass. He has been such a pleasure for our team to work with, always open to sit down, spend time, a time where superintendent's time is at such a premium right now, it's so very, very difficult to get on calendars. Dr. Glass, through it all, has actually made time to really stay focused on safety and security throughout the district. He's been wonderful to work with, and as a result, we've been able to continually move the ball down the field, which is really what we want. There are many things that we can do, but we always need the district to help us, even with that 10%. So, we'll move at 90%, still need the 10% line, and help from the district to say, yes, I'll help you with this, and he's been tremendous. Thank you so much for being such a great partner with us. It's really made a tremendous difference, and I think the district's lucky to have you, as well as the buy-in from the board to perform with the program a year ago. And we came to be great partners with the district, and a lot of work still to do. Hopefully, we have a different environment next year to do it, and regardless of what they throw at us, we'll be ready. So, if anybody has any questions on any of the material or anything outside the box, feel free.
Just got a question on the, something, a second here. So, if you talk about the, are there documents on that internet that would be necessary in an emergency situation, that there is risk that if they don't have a posted vote or a traffic vote, like, where are we going to ensure that in a situation where there was an infrastructure issue, same, right, clearly, in a day? So, do we have some sort of process to deal with that?
So, there is a lot of redundancy. Without getting too deep into the weeds in this particular forum, most of the documents are cloud-based. The intranet site is only a window to documents that reside in the district's network. So, essentially, it's not like it's just in that internet and don't reside in place else. It's just that where, essentially, they're embedded in that site. So, we basically say, oh, they're here, we're going to create the window of it there. So, it's available, all the administrators and key personnel have it, so the permission levels are really, really good, based on the Google's platform. So, again, it's more of a central repository where we embed items. There are hard copies of all the items as well. Law enforcement has their own copy, and New York State also has a copy, because, as I mentioned earlier, with the beds portal, we have to upload all the data on those plans. And in theory, every police agency in New York State should have access to your building level plans from your cars. I'm not, I'm not going to say whether that's actually the case.
This might really go into every police department.
And to be honest with you, there is rarely going to be a situation where a police officer responds to a building, he's going to sit there and go, I need to look at Eastchester building response plan. It's in there, but most of the time, these situations happen so quickly, you need to know what you're doing. The great record titles, floor plans certainly were a big piece, reunification plans, how to set things up when you have the time, when you kind of slow things down. The first, you know, five, 10, 15 minutes of an incident, no one's looking at that three-room block, I don't think, right now, but that's a great question.
That is why we emphasize the training on the emergency response plans, whether it be district-wide or building level. We push that training, and we keep plugging things in into that document. That document's a long document for the building level, whether you know it or not, or have reviewed it or seen it. Now, we're talking about 100, 100-plus pages for each building. So, and those documents are available in the hard copy to all of our building principals. I'll go onto that. Another reason that we wanted to get the reunification kit out there for, you know, for our administrators, our principals to have available to them, was because it gave them all the resources, more or less in a box or two. That reunification kit is a mobile kit that has a bunch of resources. It'll have plans, it'll have reunification cards, as John had mentioned, in there, so they won't be scrambling. They won't be looking for things. Although Bill, Bill Blum, who had the credit, you know, for a lot of assistance throughout the year, we've talked about upping our game potentially with those reunification kits, and getting tablets and other kinds of resources in there, in the event that you need, you know, some other access. I think we're doing pretty well with the hard copies also.
I could just ask, if you're here responding, use the mic and talk into the device, so that you're on zoom in?
Sure.
I appreciated what you had to say about making sure we have round pegs for round holes, and all of your, the information you gave us about orientation for security guards and the training. I think it's obviously also really important not to have a revolving door of security staff, so I was wondering how the progress has been in terms of consistency with security guards at the schools.
The consistency has been pretty good this year. Here and there, you get people are calling out sick. What I try to do, when I'm available and in district, I'll come out, touch base with the new security guards, make sure that they're familiar with the protocols for that building. Sometimes they bounce around. Obviously, everybody in town and probably further knows VDO who's here. I check in with VDO, see how the new guards are doing, and I check in with all the guards around district. But we have that good relationship with Ryder Security, so I do advise them, if they're sending a new guard, I want to know who it is. Jeanette is also heavily involved in that. Joe DeMeo from the high school then is very involved in that process. So, we have tightened up on the security. The checklist really has given us confidence that they've covered all of the aspects that they need to cover. What we find in some of the districts that we go into is that you have security guards that come from a contracted company, and they really are just told to go watch that door, but they're not explained, nothing's explained to them further than that in regards to emergency response, protocols, or do they do train? So, we'd like to up the training. We did training with all of the guards at the start of the year, and then as they come in, we try to catch who we have. Sometimes guards are in for one or two days, so we just want to know that they have the basics, the basics covered. And, you know, we did do some additional training with the Raptor system, you know, for the visitor entry system. So, we did hour-long training on that, and we continue to push that along also.
I will tell you also that good security personnel want that training. So, if you have somebody that's coming into your buildings and putting their hand on their head and kicking back, that's not what you want in your district. The people that are, the ones that you want to see are those that are, hey, listen, I want to know what to do in this situation. I want to understand this, because they're here every day, and they don't want to be in a situation where they're at a disadvantage if they have to manage a critical incident. Many of them are retired law enforcement, so they have that drive to make sure that they understand how the environment works here, and it's definitely a unique environment, the K-12 building. So, we want to make sure that we provide them that trade, ongoing training, and if there are people that are coming in, because there's always going to be substitutes, that those people get the knowledge they need to be able to do their job, because that could be the day it is probably. And no one's going to care that that was just a substitute, they're going to care about what the consequences were.
Right, right. Well, I mean, of course, there are substitutes, and I think the training sounds great. Really, because they're the front-facing, they're the front face of the building for many of our families and our children, and I think it's really important to see what we can do to try to have consistency in those positions. So, hopefully, that we will, you know, we'll be able to achieve that with that kind of consistency, but any kind of insights that you can offer at some point down the line even to the district about, you know, what makes for successful longer-term relationships. Obviously, there's some luck involved and timing, but I think it's really important for the families to know those security guards, and hopefully, we'll have long-term relationships.
I just have to mention one other thing. Bill Blum and I have discussed this also, rotating the security guards throughout the district to get them more familiar with some of the other buildings in the district. In the event, we would, we felt, and Dr. Glass and I have discussed this, that it might be a nice way to ensure that you have somebody, instead of a sub that hasn't been in our district, but we have somebody from within, is more familiar with our protocols, radios, and other such things. So, we're always working and thinking about how to improve.
I just wanted to shout out the really great procedures that you have in place at the high school, middle school campus for drop-offs in the mornings, since I come through every day, and I think it's managed very well. Thank you.
I appreciate that, but I can't take credit for it completely. Honestly, Joe DeMeo up at the high school, and Jeff Capelano, I have to give them credit. Jeff's out there every morning coordinating a lot of that, but, you know, they're a good group up there, and they know what they're doing, and they're getting the traffic through. There don't seem to be many concerns. I actually drop my daughter off, you know, on a regular basis, I see what's going on, and I think they're doing a nice job, but we're always there to offer any suggestion.
Okay, and I think the key to it is just constant improvement, so we're always seeking to improve, that's what we do in every part of this district, but clearly, security is critical. I want to thank you guys, I don't need to cut you off, but we want, we have to get to our agenda, because we still need to get next to our. Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation, and I apologize for kind of some of that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thanks to you both, we appreciate your partnership and your hard work, and thank you for helping our board understand a little bit more about this return on its investment. Thank you very much.
I'd like to, just, I don't have the mic at the moment. I just want to thank you, Doc, Lisa, also for your help and your cooperation in pushing things forward. I know that we have budgets and things like that, but usually, when there's something that makes sense, you're always cooperative, and Lisa always works with us that way. I can't say enough about the cooperation that I get.
Thank you. Likewise, we appreciate all that you've done and continue to do. Thank you. And the last quick item I just wanted to mention to everyone is that the district's revised plan, Jeff's been working hard to, with all of our district staff to revise, is on this board agenda, is available for the public to review, it will be posted on our website as well, for a 30-day comment period. So, any members of the public who wish to comment tonight, or at any, at the next June board meeting, either one of the next two June board meetings, would have the opportunity to come to public comment, or to email myself, or any of the Board of Education. With any comments about that plan, and it will be presented at the June 22 board meeting for adoption, following that 30-day comment period. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I'm going to move to the agenda, and Steve, can I get you to move six, seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah, let's move to it. Yep. Okay, so, I move that we approve the minutes for the May 11, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the placements as recommended by the Committee on Preschool Special Education and the Committee on Special Education. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the student activity reports for the Eastchester High School and Eastchester Middle School from January 2020 through March of 2020, as attached. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the Treasures Report for April of 2021, and be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2021 to 2022 VOCs service request as attached. Was that 10 also?
No, hang, hang, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Hang on on 10, because I know VDO is probably not going to want to vote on that. So, I want to do that separately, because I know it's an issue, and something I'm trying to do is quick. So, VDO, can you second the motion on six, seven, and eight?
I second.
All right, and any discussion or comment?
I have a quick question, my apologies.
Yeah?
So, so the student activity report shows a balance of about $5,000 or $6,000 for the class of 2020. Did we determine, will there be, I think it was because the plan was to do some of the deaths that they couldn't do last year, this year, or something like that, is that still on track?
I'm not in a position to answer that question directly, but thank you for bringing it up. I know you kind of raised that today with me, just so I can get into it. I had to check the high school administration to see what their current thinking is. I haven't really dialed into that for a while.
Okay, I just want to make sure we understand what the disposition is, as you promised. Does this not mean we're voting for it? I just, just a reminder.
All right, anybody else? All in favor? All right, and Cheryl, do you want to do 10?
Sure. Um, my leaded, yeah. Be resolved that the Board of Education ratifies the 2021-22 budget for the Westchester Plutnam School Boards Association in the amount of $272,812. And be resolved, the Board of Education approved one vote each, because for Westchester Plutnam School Boards Association slate of 2021-22 officers and members of Board of Directors as attached.
All right, and can I get a second, Dave?
A second.
All right, and any discussion or comment? All right, VDO, I know your position, I don't need it, I understand.
I will abstain.
That's perfect, and I know why. All right, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, and so, we're now going to move into executive session.
We're going to recess.
We're going to recess to get the budget vote, so we can then hopefully certify the results at the end. All right, and just before we do that, I want to announce, should a non-incumbent, or I guess a new person, be the fourth highest vote-getter, the intention would be that since they would be assuming the remainder of Sal's term, that they would, before they take the oath, they would go through the standard orientation process and onboarding that would be necessary for them to then be able to take the oath to fulfill the term, and the intention would be that that would then happen at the next board meeting on June 8, should that circumstance arise. So, just so everyone understands, that's the protocol, and for transparency purposes, I just want to state that before we go get the results, which we're now about to do. So, I call, I move that we recess to go get the budget, the vote results.
Question.
Very good.
Question, question, question.
Yes.
Are we coming back here to do this on VDO?
Yes, to accept the results.
So, we leave the meeting, and then we start it? No, I would ask that you just mute your mics and shut off your video and leave yourself logged on.
Okay, so, we're back from getting the budget results. Can I move that we go back into session? Second, Steve second, and I all in favor. I moved it.
I second.
All right, and then, Steve, you want to do the budget vote, certification of the budget?
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby certifies the results of the May 18, 2021 budget eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one budget vote and election as stated below. Oh, should I? Okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Proposition one, yes, one thousand two hundred thirty-five to no, seven hundred seventy. Proposition two, yes, one thousand five hundred forty-eight votes to no, four hundred forty-six. And for the Board of Education trustees, Kristi McCloskey, one thousand three hundred sixty-three votes, Jonah Rizzo-Blackpin, one thousand twenty-eight votes, Christina Gagin, one thousand one hundred thirty-nine votes, Tara Conti, six hundred sixty-five votes, Erin Murray, eight hundred eighty-one votes, Jaclyn DiMarco, one thousand one hundred eighty-eight votes, Andrew Savitt, seven hundred sixty votes, and David Carforo, seven hundred ninety-eight votes. For write-in votes, there were about ten to be posted.
And Vito, can I get a second?
If I could find my review. Yes, I second.
All right, and can I get a motion to accept them? I mean, we have motion, can I get a vote to accept them? All right, and I want to.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Against, abstentions? You're against?
Wait, what?
No, all in favor?
All in favor.
I'm sorry, all in favor?
Everyone's in favor, everyone's in favor.
Okay. All right, and, oop, did I close that? Oh, man, I closed that window. So I want to congratulate all who ran and specifically the winners, and I will be calling the winners to congratulate them personally tomorrow, given the lateness of the hour, and welcome them aboard. Congratulations to all for the effort that was put into run and welcome to the Board of Education. All right, and then I guess, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I guess not, I guess we never did comments. Comments, any board comments? All right, can I have Vito?
I always have something to say, you know. I just want to congratulate all the candidates who ran, you know, putting your name out there in front of the public to do this job, which is a thankless job, like we all know that, but a lot of the public doesn't know that. I want to thank the people that are currently on the board, who are not going to be with us come July first, and I want to thank the new people who put their hats into the ring too, and I hope they, I hope they come prepared to work, which I'm sure they will. Let me say it that way.
And I guess I skipped comments from the public, so.
I have a quick, just, also, thank you to all the election workers and to the staff and to Jeanette, who I saw at the polls this morning at seven-thirty. And it's the one day a year at work, Jeanette Messina wears sneakers because she is running all day. So thank you to the election poll workers and to the staff who worked all day at the polls and thanks to all the voters who came out.
Yes, well said. All right, and I skipped comments from the public, so anybody from the public who wishes to comment, I'll give you a few seconds to raise your hand.
If you're online.
If you're online. Yes, there's nobody here else besides us, so. All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
No.
All right, Steve and Cheryl seconds and all in favor? All right, thank you everyone and good night and we'll see you on your day.